You still have just a couple of minutes for all those who may have just arrived. We do have a sign up sheet and we do ask everyone to, who wishes to speak this evening, to go ahead and, and sign the, uh, the information sheet there with your name and address. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's August 26th City Council meeting. All those who are able to and would like to, I'd ask you to join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. The first item of business is citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. Uh, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and, and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on our future agenda. Again, this is for items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to come to the podium and speak?
Hi, my name is Bobby Hodge and I live at 13702 Lawrence Street. I'm calling to voice my concerns about a specific park in regards to potholes. If you go to Cary Roberts' Memorial Park down on K-7, right there, when you're about to turn into park your vehicle, the, one of the things you have to watch out for is the numerous potholes and all, all compared to like, okay, it's akin to, to like a bunch of craters on the moon. That's what it feels like. Uh, you have to dodge, you have to dodge all the potholes and it's, I'm just afraid if someone goes to that park, someone's gonna end up either popping a tire or, or damaging something else to their vehicle. And that is my chief concern. It's not in my, it's not in my ward, but still, it's, this is still a matter that should be discussed and taken care of. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges, and, uh, we'll-
Hodge.
Hodge, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay, no worries.
We'll just say Bobby. And with that, what we'll do is we'll have staff, uh, look into that and come back to and report back to the council on that, uh, road. I, I know exactly where you're talking about and yes, that road has gotten rough.
Yes, it really means a lot. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will then move on with our consent agenda. That includes the minutes of the August 12th, 2024 City Council meeting, claims for city operations, a massage therapy business establishment and therapist license renewal for essential massage, a public use request for the homecoming parade, an amendment to the medical director's agreement. Is there anything the staff wishes to have pulled? Is there anything the residents would like to have pulled? Counsel? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Shannon. Uh, vote please.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto new business. Uh, for tonight's, uh, agenda, we are going to institute a three-minute timer, so anybody who wishes to come up and speak on any matter, uh, will be, um, limited to three minutes. Uh, the timer will be showing on the screen here behind me, eventually. So I'm not gonna just necessarily cut your mic off at three minutes, but we ask you to please try to be courteous and keep it to that three-minute timeframe. Uh, the first two items are gonna be, are kind of together, so we will have the public hearing, which will be a chance for all of those, uh, residents who wish to speak out on, uh, the levying of property tax rate, um, will get a chance to speak. And then, item number two, we will then close that and go on to item number two, which will then be time for the council to actually discuss it and, and put forward a, uh, a motion on which one we'd like to have, uh, published. And with that, uh, I would accept a motion to open a public meeting to exceed the revenue neutral rate beginning at 7:34 PM.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by Ms. Blanks. All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, an opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. With that, the public hearing is, is open. Is there a staff presentation? We, and first?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tilly Lepant, Finance Director. Uh, tonight, we are asking council to approve, uh, property tax rate which would exceed the revenue neutral rate. That means all that's being approved is that at least one tax dollar is more would be levied for the 2025 budget than was levied for the 2024 budget. So this is not approving any dollar amount. It's just saying, in the budget that we've talked about this summer, uh, has, it's, does require taxes that exceed that, our current, uh, level of taxes.
Any other input from staff? Seeing none, I would entertain the residents to be able to come up and speak on this issue. Please come up. And if you could, go ahead, even though we've had to sign in, please state your name and address, if you would.
My name's Scott Harding, 13786 Valley View Way, Bonner Springs, Kansas. And I'm here today, I've got a question for you guys. Did anybody look at your emails about the, um, exceeding revenue neutral? Any of you guys look at your emails and get your public opinion on this? Did you look at them? The problem we've got, the senior and the poor is having a big problem with this taxes. There's a lot of people, even in my neighborhood, that are having to move because they just can't afford things. And, um, I wish that you guys would take a look at this and have some compassion for some of the people that can't afford some of these taxes. And any new tax right now is a big thing. I know, um, a lot of people. It's not just here, it's everywhere in Windout County. And I would hope that you would really, really take a close look at adding any more new taxes. And I demand for the people in Windout County, the seniors that can't be here, the poor that can't be here, they can't get out of their houses, take some compassion and vote no for exceeding revenue neutral. I appreciate the time talking with you guys, but it seems like a lot of people aren't listening. You know, a lot of people make good money and a lot don't. And if somebody's on social security, they can't pay the taxes on their houses and a lot of them has lost their houses and their land. I talked to the mayor in Kansas City, Kansas. He says they've already lost 4,000 people in Windout County. I'm not sure how many we've lost in Bonner, but I know in my neighborhood, there's probably been 10 people move out of my neighborhood. The seniors that can't afford the taxes. They're getting crazy. Over in my neighborhood, they're paying 30 to $50,000 more than what the asking price is, which is crazy. And it's raising the seniors that's been there for 12, 15 years and they can't afford it now because their house payment and their taxes have went up because of the insurance went up, because their taxes went up, because that, you know, value of their house went up, so that raises your insurance rate. So I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but I'm sure you are. Yours is doing the same thing as what ours is. And I really think you need to take a close look at this and consider the poor, the seniors, and the middle class. And I would appreciate if you would do that and consider that when you do vote, vote no for exceeding revenue neutral. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
I guess I'm next.
If you could, name and address, please.
Do I have to push anything, or we could-
Nope, the green button's on, so your light's on.
My name's Craig Estes, 13520 Pioneer. Um, I'm here like the rest of these folks are. We can't afford these taxes. And we need to go, uh, neutral on these. We can't, we cannot afford, keep, keep getting these raises every year. I mean, it's, it's crazy. I've only been here a couple of years and I watch these things and, you know, the value of our houses are continuing to rise, which, are they really, you know? But, uh, everybody, everybody here is hurt. Everybody, everybody in the community. And, uh, your taxing us right out of the county is what you're doing. And so I ask you guys, wholeheartedly, please. I mean, these poor people that are, that are old, and I'm not young, but these poor people that are old, they, when they can't afford their house because of the taxes, come on. That's not fair. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? That's, you go ahead and sign in right there if you would.
My name is Randy Nye. I'm representing Robert and Carol Owens, 101 South Park. How many years have you gone above revenue neutral in the last 10?
Well, revenue neutral's only been in existence for three years, I believe this is-
But how mu- how many years have you gone over the budget? Tax increase every year?
Well-
For your budget?
The revenue does go up. The, the demand on revenue has, goes up on a regular basis. We've always worked hard, uh, to keep the mill levy down. So, but this, I don't want to take all your time, so let you go ahead and keep talking.
But there needs to be a break in more, more, more every year. Because my in-laws are 91 and 92. They live on a fixed income, which there's, they're not the only ones. But it's getting to a point, we could either pay for medicine, or food, or pay my taxes. So you need to consider holding at revenue neutral to give some people a break, time to catch up for a few years. So that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I didn't sign in either, but I'll do that now. My name is Keith Sessions, longtime resident and homeowner at 169 Emerson Avenue. I'm sure everyone up there and everyone behind me can agree on one thing. Property values have shot up over the last three, three years or so. It occurs to me that that brought a huge windfall to the city, the county, the state. So you were, you're awash in new revenue from our increased property values. And I diligently pay my taxes every year, just like everyone else. I think it's beyond the pale to come and say that you need to increase the property rate, the property tax rate, in light of this obvious windfall. I see we have a fleet of very shiny police cars, a beautiful library, we have a new water treatment facility. My concern is, did that account for the windfall? Is that where all of this money went? Because surely we can agree on one thing. As our property values go up, our tax burden goes up. And just like all of these people, I just cut a check. Where did that money go? And where, where does it get us to the point where we now need to actually increase taxes, property taxes? That seems absurd to me. Uh, one other point I'd like to make. We all know, everyone here, everyone there knows that we are under a lot of inflationary pressure. We are already facing challenges. You got a windfall. Give us a break because we're dealing with other issues. A lot of us are on fixed incomes. So as you nibble away at our limited income, we're left to pick up the pieces. Take your windfall and leave us alone. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
I'm Karen Lesher, 13324 Metropolitan Avenue, Bonner. Um, so we spoke about the elderly, which it's, it's, you know, it's affecting them, but it's also affecting us that are still working. My taxes are $6,000 a year. They went up a hundred dol- a thousand dollars just this year. And now you want to tack on, when I did the little figures, another 500. And my, I haven't gotten that much increase in my job, my pay. So us with children, that are still trying to raise our children, we can't afford these extra taxes because we're not getting that extra income at work and groceries have gone up. Everything has gone up so much that it's just, I want to raise my kids here and let them finish school, but it's gonna be almost impossible if the taxes keep going up and up and up every year. That's all.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one else, then I would ask for a motion to, uh, close the public hearing at 7:45 PM.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Blanks. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? And with that, we'll move on to item number two now, which is a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Um, would anybody like to make a motion in regards to that? And then we can have our discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Long. We'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Shannon. Any?
Nothing at this, at this point.
Just trying to figure out which points I'd like to touch on because I've put a lot of time, and we've all put a lot of time and energy into this topic. Of course. Sorry, is that better? Thank you. Um, we're, we're all in the same boat. We all live in the city. We all have the same demands on us that you do, so please don't feel like we don't hear you. Um, somebody asked, and I'm, I'm sorry, I think it was Mr. Sessions, talked about the windfall of property tax increase and where did that money go? The budget is public. The budget is out there and nobody's hiding anything. We're not overspending, at least in my opinion. Um, everything has gone up in cost for the city, just like it has for us as individual residents. So it's costing more to do the, the business of the city. Um, we want to make sure that the employees are taken care of and want to stay working for us. We want to make sure that the police department is fully operational, the fire department's fully operational and has the equipment that they need. Um, we, you can defer some things for some time, but eventually it catches up to you. And I know that you all are aware of that, as far as home repairs. You can put it off for a little while, but it ends up costing more in the long run. And we've seen that recently with our water treatment plant in our city hall, where it got to a point where we had no choice but to take action. We don't want to end up there again. Even if we tread water for a while, we have to be cautious of ending up in a hole. Um, we're in a situation where the unified government is having to cut the budget drastically. It needs to, in my opinion. It, it trickles down to us at the city level. We're losing, I'm gonna say this number, Tilly, tell me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong, $500,000 of sci-fi money that was promised to us. Gone, poof. We have to make that up somehow, somewhere. People would like streets repaired, sidewalks installed, all of the things that are important to our standard of living in the city. I'm all about cutting the fluff if we can find it. And I think that our city staff does an amazing job of holding the costs on as much as possible. I also believe in people, giving people salary that they can live on. And our staff is, is, do that just like everyone else. So exceeding revenue neutral doesn't mean we're out to get every, everything we can take out of people's pockets. Because in the budget conversations and in the workshops that we've had, which are all open to the public, we have a couple of different options on the table, and one of them is reducing the mill levy. We do work for that every year. We work very hard and very diligently to try to have as small of an impact as possible on people's pockets. So I, I just want everybody to feel assured that we're not just signing a blank check. We're putting in the time and the energy to look at the numbers and try to come to the best possible solution for all of us. Thank you.
Ms. Woods?
I cannot say anything better than what she said. You can't do it. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I forget about this. Um, we, we can't do it without money. And I love living in Bonner and the area and everything that's getting done. She's right.
Sir, you've had your opportunity to speak. It's council now. Go ahead, Ms. Woods.
Yeah, that's what I had to say.
Mr. McMahon?
I, yeah, I can appreciate everyone that showed up today. And, uh, you know, being a Bonner resident, obviously, we all are, and, and I would imagine almost everyone up here has a home. We're affected by more than what our taxes are here in Bonner Springs. When we start talking about our parents and our grandparents, you know, we gotta think about our kids, too. We made decisions a long time ago that's brought us to this point. And some of you guys that's been residents for many, many years, um, maybe at that time when we were making decisions, you didn't see the ramification, but now here we are. So we have to make the best decisions as council members, that we maintain a quality, uh, service. And that's our first responders. We've increased our fire department to full time, and I think that's a good thing. When it comes to looking at your budget, I have a budget as well, and I'm a business owner. We have to make really good decisions, but at the same time, we had, we understand that there's expenses. And I'm not just, my, my budget's not just affected by raising my personal property taxes where I live here in Bonner Springs. When I go to the grocery store, I'm affected by it. When I go buy a car, I can go to the other side of town and I'm affected by it. We're affected by the decisions that our federal government makes. So I have sympathy for people that are seniors that are having a hard time paying their, their bills, if you will, or, or trying to wonder, wondering how they're gonna be able to afford their taxes. Maybe their house is paid for and, and they still, you know, you take taxes and insurance and, and to stay in that house, you gotta make a decision. No one saw this coming and no one wishes this upon anybody else. But I know that here in Bonner Springs, we do appreciate clean water and we appreciate good streets. So we have to make these decisions. And to, to maintain our staff here and to maintain police officers and firemen and stuff, you know, you have to pay these guys. The stuff all comes collectively and this is how we arrive at our budget. And then we have to look at what expenses may occur in the future. So I, I have all the sympathy in the world for you. I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote. But I think we need to be conscientious about what strain do we put on this city if we don't approve this.
Blanks?
Thank you, everyone, for being here today and sharing your thoughts and concerns with, with us. Um, I think we all, without our council hats on, feel exactly how you do of the rising cost of everything. Uh, myself, I have four different jobs. Um, so I totally empathize with you of working hard and having bills to pay. With my city council hat on, working day in and day out with city staff, and, and myself going to department heads and having conversations and asking to look at those budgets. As Ms. Gurley said, everything is online, not only for this year, but looking forward into the future of where our department heads work really hard to cut every cent that they can, to where money is only being spent where it's needed, not where it's wanted. And on the other hand, I am very active in all of the Facebook groups. And even with our spending being very, very, um, selective, people are still asking more out of our city. So it's, as Mr. McMahon said, it's, it's hard to come up where to vote because nobody wants more money spent, but everybody, every single day in the community is sending emails or writing in Facebook groups of what they want to see more from the city. Those two things just don't equate to each other, so it's, it's hard to get a grasp on what everybody really wants and needs. Um, I just want to say, and Tilly, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the overage being asked in dollars is $436,000?
The 436 is if we kept our same tax rate with our increased valuations.
Do you know what that is? Um, and not to put you on the spot, per household?
It just depends on each, it depends on the value of your home. Commercial property is assessed at a higher rate than residential, so there's lots of variations that go into, you know, that.
Thank you. I just, I know on a big scale, $436,000 is a lot of money, but looking at other cities who are raising theirs by millions or requesting to, with our workshop, and everybody's, please come to our workshops. The information that you can learn in the workshops, we would love for you to help us get that information correctly. But when we talked about increases during that workshop, my question, I asked Ms. Lepant, and she pulled up a slide, as I said, where exactly are these increases coming from? Like, I just want to know, like, if we're spending more money and you're requesting more, like, what are those things for? And they were as simple as health insurance costs have risen 7% going into next year for all of our city employees. We, we don't have a fire marshal, so the, the fire department has said, we really need a fire marshal. With the growth of our city and our downtown and how busy we are, that's an important key that's missing. Another thing is we don't have an IT person. Everybody in staff plays a lot of different roles in this, in this organization, and they don't get paid for it. IT is super important because of how everything is technology-based. Those were the three main things of where that difference comes from. And I would say those are pretty three important necessities that our city's missing that we need to add. I just wanted to make that transparent because I know a few of you said, well, where's this money going and why do you need it? That's where it's going. Not our salaries, not anything lavish that our city doesn't need, but those are just three important components to our city. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming. I'd love to see more of your faces at our meetings and our workshops so we can listen and we can work together, um, and hopefully be on the same page. But thank you again for coming.
I'd like to thank you all for coming as well. And I echo everything that Emily and everyone else has said so far. Um, they've said a lot of the things that have been on my heart as well. They've said a lot of the things that have been on my heart as well. I'm also a homeowner here in Bonner Springs and have been for a long time. I also work several different jobs. You've probably seen me around town in many different hats, including this one. So I know what it's like to try to make ends meet, and to try to make those ends meet gets harder and harder each year. However, I echo Ms. Blanks, what she just said. We, I'm looking out right now, there's a full crowd out here. It's really nice to see you guys. I'd like to see you more often. When we're talking about things that matter, I want to hear your voice, not just tonight, but in the other previous workshops we've had about budgets, about everything else that's been going on, even in our city council meetings. So please continue to come, please continue to let us know what is on your mind and on your hearts. But in, one thing that I do know that the city does a good job of is allowing only the things that are necessary to go through when it matters. So us saying yes to a revenue neutral rate increase or exceeding the revenue neutral rate is not saying, go ahead, spend whatever you want, in excess of whatever you want. It's just giving them that option should we need it. And as I've seen over the last couple of years, we've needed it a lot. There are things that are so unexpected that happen all the time, that we just don't have built into our budget because we didn't expect it to happen, and those are the times that really matter. So I just want you guys to know that. It takes a lot of evaluation to get to the decisions that we come to when we don't take them lightheartedly. So I want you to know that your opinion matters, your voice matters, and we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Yes. As I understand it, the mill levy rate right now is 39.8. Is that correct, Tilly? The revenue neutral rate that we would have if we don't raise is 36.9, 36.6, which is less. Okay? Now, we need more money than we can get at the 36.6. And so that doesn't mean that we're going to go past the 39.8. Hopefully, it'll be a whole lot less than that. Maybe we'll be around 38. So when the city asks for something, all this stuff, like everybody else has said, we take into account what we actually need to keep going, spending as much time and effort to keep the prices down on everything we do. We look at all the options, things in Bonner Springs, people in Bonner Springs, they want Bonner Springs to be its own entity. Consequently, we have our own water plant, we have our own police department, we have our own everything. And people want that way. They want that kind of individual, so you can come to us just like you are this evening. Now, I've been in Bonner Springs for over 40 years, almost 50 years. I raised my family here, and when I was working, I worked several jobs to keep things going. Now I'm retired, I'm on fixed income. And I see the same thing as you do. Since 2021, my taxes have increased 51%, or, excuse me, not my taxes, my evaluation of my property has increased 51%. The amount of taxes I've paid has gone up 40%, or just a little less, 39%. So I know what you're saying about this money, but you know what? We live in a city here that's trying to take care of us. This is where you are. You live in Bonner Springs a whole lot more than you live in Wyandotte County and the state of Kansas. Is that not correct? So we're trying to take care of you the best we can. We're, we're the, your front line, right here, folks. And we're trying our best to do it, and it takes just a little bit more money than what the state says. This revenue neutral is something that the state put on us. And it was, looks to me like it was an effort to put the ball back in our courts. We did all we could here at the state of Kansas. We put the ball in Bonner Springs Court, we put the ball in Leavenworth Court, we put the ball in Shawnee's Court to take care of these things. So we're trying to take care of it according to their rules. So the reason you know about this is because the state of Kansas makes us come forward and say that. That's okay, that's transparency. But I want you to know that we're doing the best we can here to make sure you're getting every penny's worth, every dollar's worth spent wisely, and that there is, isn't anything that we leave undone knowingly. And like we all said, if you see ways that we can save money, we want to do it. This is a volunteer community that's been brought forth many times, and we've had people volunteer to help out on lots of committees, which really helps the city. We had a volunteer fire department until about two years ago. Well, you can't get volunteers hardly anymore. We've had to go to a full-staffed fire department, which helps, that if we didn't do that, your insurance rates would really go up. So we've had to do that. It was a hard call. I hated to do it, but we needed to do it. I, I fully understand what you're going through. I've been going through it also, just like you, because like I said, I'm now at the point in my life where I'm on a fixed income. And I, I, I hear you. Believe me, I do. And it makes it difficult to read all the emails that I get and say, yeah, but I still need a little bit more money here. And I, and we do, okay? We do need it to keep this city running. Like I said, for the, we can supply you with water, sewer, and police department, fire department, and all those people, they want their wages, too. And if we don't give them a little bit more every time, they start looking and go somewhere else. And, you know, like, running that water plant down there, the person that runs that's a high-dollar person to try to find. You don't hire those people for 20 bucks an hour. So keep in mind, we know what you're saying, and we're watching every dollar. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Let me go and speak first. Well, go ahead.
Thanks. I like to be, a lot of you know me, a lot of you don't. Wow, that's unbelievable. People say I have a very loud voice, I'm sorry. But thank you. I am very happy that you're here. I echo a lot of what you've already heard this evening, but I like to be as transparent as I can. Our house was appraised last year, $287,000. This year, it's up to 320, $32,000 increase, which is 11%, which means roughly about another $500 a year. I'm a retired school teacher. Jan and I worked three jobs, had a trophy business in our home. I wanted to do that because I wanted to be able to provide for our kids, and I firmly believed that it was, it was necessary. I wanted to, this morning, I met with Tilly and some others, and I had liked, a lot of other people really didn't understand this revenue neutral or exceeding it. So I asked. KCK has, and I'm not trying to dump everything towards them, but I want to give this. I think it's been very evident in the newspapers the last week or so, where KCK has got to come up with $17 million because they voted down the, to exceed the revenue neutral. As was pointed out by Mrs. Gurley, the, what came to us by what they decided, it has already cost us a half a billion dollars in streets. That money's gone. That we needed and depended on to provide for our city. Have no idea whether that'll ever come back or not. I don't know if there's any other things that will be coming, forthcoming to us that we don't even know about, that we've been receiving. But the thing, the question that I had was, if we vote this down, how much will that mean in our monthly taxes? For me, I think it figured out to be about $25, okay, if we vote this down. Now, here's the catch. If we freeze that now, cap that now, we're taking this year's budget into next year. Everything is going to go up, we know that. But we can't go up because we don't have the money. Therefore, we have to make cuts. What did Kansas City, Kansas, cut? And this is just a couple of things that was in the newspaper. On the, in the Star News this morning, there was a woman that is said from her front porch, she's looking at homes across the street that have been boarded up. The department that handles that was cut $450,000. The Kansas City, Kansas Parks and Rec was cut $750,000. That also takes care of all their parks and stuff, plus all their mowing and everything. The land maintenance department, they were cut 73% of their funding. It was the livable neighborhood. It's cut 73% plus a couple of positions. Now, that's Kansas City, Kansas. But if we're to cap this for next year, wanting to do all we could for you, how much will that decrease your monthly payment, number one? And number two, what's going to happen in 2026? Because if we're not being able to increase the funding for 2025, that's going to have to be made up. We're going to have to do cuts. I can't tell you what that is, I don't know, but there would be cuts. We've, as I said, we've already lost $500,000 for our streets. That's going to have to be made up, or we're going to have to try to see what we can do and maintain. Yes, we've bought fire equipment and stuff only because of certain things that we've had in our city that we are able to do. And a lot of it is on the, the mill levy, not milli, I'm sorry, the one quarter of 1% on taxes. And we're able to do a lot of things with that that we weren't able to do. So this may sound awfully strange, but my wife says, you know, I don't sometimes look into the future too much and stuff, but she does. And she pointed out to me that where would we be in two years? We've got to look at that. And as I told you, our, we have, we're getting close to, close to $6,000 a year in taxes. Okay? I've lived here for 50 years. I love this place, and you guys are family to us, and we're, we're bleeding. We had the appraisal company, a gentleman from the appraising company came in here a couple of months ago, and I asked him the question. I said, what is driving the, the appraisals? And I didn't get that thing out of my mouth before he said, real estate. And I think that is where our problem is, because real estate agents are independent contractors. They have a pace on what is going on and what's available and everything like that. And so we're being, we, I feel like out here, sometimes we're the tail being wagged by the dog. And yes, you and I, all of us here have absolutely, we, we don't have a recourse. Yes, you're here tonight, and we really deeply appreciate it, because I'm on, I'm retired, I'm on fixed income, just like my wife. And I just wonder, as you've so aptly pointed out, and it's true, how much longer can we keep, keep this up? And I, I don't have the answer to that, but I want you to know that I have to look at our city, I have to look at everything, and it's, it's at the point where I have to, or have to, want to, don't want to, but have to look at exceeding the revenue neutral. And, but I did hear what you said, and I have made notes here on everybody that said what they said, and I don't disagree with any one of you. But I can't see us going into next year without having the funding to be able to maintain what we have, in other words, maintain it as things have been going on, and then look at 2026 and said, okay, now we're basically two years behind. So again, I hope this has helped you, and that I do care, and wife and I have gotten hit pretty good, too. So, and I did talk with them, I have protested it, and they laughed in my face. And they said, well, the reason yours, one year, mine went up 47 and 1/2%, and everybody around, the neighbors around me went up 23. And I asked them, I said, why? What's, what's the reason? Oh, well, yours, your house wasn't fairly appraised. I said, oh, since 2008. I thought that was nice, but anyway, I don't want to take anymore. Thank you so much for understanding, and I hope this helped, and it's hard. Thank you.
The, so I'm going to say, I don't, I don't want to sound dismissive to anyone by any means. I fully sympathize with you. I don't wish, I don't like paying taxes either, believe me. If I had my choice, I'd go tax-free as well. But the reality is, we do enjoy living in a city that provides us a lot of services. There's a few things I would, wouldn't mind addressing. One of them is when we heard the comment about the windfall. I think it's important that we, everybody understands, we don't actually set a mill rate. We say, here's the revenue we need, and then the revenue is based upon, they use that revenue based upon the assessed value of the city to calculate that mill rate. If appraised values go up a tremendous amount, our revenue, we still work a budget based upon the revenue, and in theory, you're not going to see that large, what you would see is reduction in mill levies. What happens sometimes, though, is you will have some homes that are undervalued, others that are already at the proper value, and so what will happen is, those who are undervalued will see a drastic increase. I'm sitting looking at my home and it's valued properly, and I'm looking at $48 more a year, based upon this current. But that's because my value's already up there. If I was down low, if mine was undervalued, yes, I would be looking at that larger amount as well. Watching some of the other budget meetings around our community here, around some of the other, in the metro area, I came across an interesting information that was put on one of them, which talked about cities in the, in Kansas, and there are cities of first class, second class, and third class. We are a city of the second class. Cities of the second class, the average mill rate was fifth, over 52%. And here we are at 38%, 38, 39%, depending on what gets passed this evening. I can tell you, I've, I've been up here for this, I think I have my 18th budget, and I can tell you, the staff has always been extremely diligent about always ensuring to make sure that the operations of this city are run as efficiently as possible while trying to provide the services we need, such as, as Mr. Shannon mentioned, full-time fire departments, the amenities that we enjoy. In fact, just to kind of give you an idea, sometimes I have to look beyond just ourselves, not just what we want. A good case in point would be about 20 years ago. We, I was a member of the, I was the chairman of the, of the planning and, I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec Committee. We had closed down Fund Valley Pool, and we said it was in the community's interest to have a community pool. So working with staff, we worked together to put together a plan for both, to get an engineering, the cost analysis, then find out what, to get, to put a sales tax initiative, what it would take to get that on there to pay for that pool, and then, of course, potential maintenance. I sat at the podium at the old city hall and gave a presentation about, to the council, about wanting to put that on the, on the vote, at the ballot box. When it came time to vote for it, I voted for it. That pool got built, and it was, it was approved by a large majority of the voters. I've been in that pool once. And that was to, is the, the opening dedication ceremony, when, along with elected officials, I was invited as the chair of the Parks and Rec Committee to all I was invited as the chair of the Parks and Rec Committee to also jump in the pool as well, and I came down a slide. I had an above-ground pool at the house, my kids had, you know, the water at their house. But I voted for it. I, I, you know, I, you know, I pushed for it. I was out there advocating for it, and I voted for it because it was something the community needed. So, I went beyond myself to say, I was willing to spend a few more dollars, whether it be at the cash register or in a mill levy, to basically make sure that our community had that pool for many of our youth and others in that, in our community that didn't have the same privilege I did. And that's a lot of what we do here, is we're putting forward. It's about having good, safe roads, good sidewalks, good fire department, good police officers. It's about having all these things. And it does cost money. I believe the budget that was initially put forward, if I'm not mistaken, it is about a 4.5% increase, which is much lower than what the inflation rate was last year. Yet, we're trying to do everything we can as a city to make sure we, we are good with the constituents' money and you, and spend it well, and spend it properly. So, is there anybody else who would like to any comments? We've had our public hearing, so this is the time for the council to speak, so. Sir, sir, sir. Sir, sir, please, please, please. Sir, please. I'm trying to talk, if you'll let me talk. I will be more than happy to. Can I ask you, I'm going to ask the officer to remove you if you aren't, I, let me speak. We have two more items coming up. And that is where we will approve the notice of the public hearing for the scheduled public hearing, as well as approval of the notice of the public hearing for both the proposed budget as well as the adoption. At those times, you'll have both a chance to speak then, as well as on the September 9th, when these come forward, you will have another opportunity to speak. Not at this specific, no, you will have another opportunity here. We've got two more items on the agenda tonight that involve the budget. You will have an opportunity to speak then. But this particular item right now, you've had your, you've had your opportunity to speak, sir. So. Oh, there's going to be another. Sir. Please. Okay. Is there anyone else on the council who would speak? If not, I would call for the vote.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. Reeves?
Can't hear her.
We can't hear a word.
Sorry. Voting on a resolution to, voting to adopt a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
No.
Blanks?
No.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, onto item number three. We're going to approve a notice of public hearing and schedule a public hearing for proposed 2024 budget amendments. Ms. LaPlante?
Mayor and Council, Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. We have four funds for 2024 that need to be amended. So, this is to approve a hearing notice. The hearing would be on September 9th. The Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund needs to be amended because we budgeted to do 138th Street project in 2023, but it got delayed to 2024. So, it's just moving that to 2024's budget. Emergency Services Sales Tax is approving the purchase of the ambulance and a server upgrade. The ambulance was in a budget in a 2025, I think was proposed, and we moved that up to 2024. The street projects, the county for this year, we did get sci-fi funding, and it was more than we thought it would be. It was $500,000. And we had originally budgeted $150,000. And so, we are amending that to be able to do sidewalks at Morris and Second Street. The $500,000 that we referred to was being referred to tonight is next year's budget that it will not be included in next year's. And then the senior center, they put on trips, and they've had some bigger trips. So, this is just more money coming in, so then we need more authority to spend that money on the trips. So, that's not, that's just more revenue coming in and more expenses going out for those senior trips that they, that they pay for. So, this is just a notice to approve the notice to publish in the paper. It has to be published 10 days before the hearing, so it will be published this week. And then the hearing will be on September 9th.
Thank you, Ms. LaPlante. Anything else on staff? If not, I would allow, if any resident would like to speak on this particular item about the public hearing for the proposed budget amendments. Anyone wish to speak? Come on up to Mike.
You had a, I wouldn't fall, I don't want to say windfall, but you had a, an amount that came in to budget for the streets. And did you say you didn't use it all? And so, you want to use it for the sidewalks, which weren't budgeted until next, for next year? Okay, that's what I'm saying, maybe I didn't understand you. Okay.
So, the city knew that the county had given us some sci-fi funds, which is to use for infrastructure. And we had thought we were going to get $150,000 a year ago when we were preparing the 2024 budget. But when the county did their budget, they actually awarded us $500,000. So, in order to be able to spend that this year on sidewalks, we need to amend the budget. So, we're getting more from the county than we thought when we originally did the budget. And so, this is to be able to spend those sci-fi funds on the sidewalk. The thing with the, that money, we thought we would have for next year as well, but because the county went revenue-neutral, that $500,000 will not be available next Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just wanted, I was just thinking, but I was just thinking, that may be used instead of sidewalks right now, to use on the streets that we're budgeting against razor tactics for next year.
Well, I mean, the street work was done for this year, and we do have.
No, 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 drive down 134th and Methodist.
Oh, the street work's not done.
No, the street work's not done.
I guess every year you have a street work.
The sci-fi was designated for walkability, which is the sidewalks.
I thought it was designated for the street.
It's in the street fund, but when it was budgeted, it was budgeted for sidewalks.
Tilly, if I, if I may, this might help a little bit. If you're familiar with Morris Street from Garfield, I mean, from Bluegrass down to Garfield, there is no sidewalk there. The students are walking home, walking to school, one of which is my granddaughter. And for years, we have been very concerned that we have children, parents, people with strollers are out there actually having to walk in the street. If you come east, coming down from Bluegrass on Morris, there are sidewalks over in front of the Methodist Church. So, to walk on the sidewalks, you have to cross the street, walk down, okay. I, well, it's kind of for, for everybody, and I appreciate your understanding on this. And that's what Tilly was talking about, that the money that we had received this year, from, for the streets this year has been spent. This was for sidewalks and stuff, and this hasn't been spent, but it will be this year. Next year, $500,000 is gone, as I tried to, as we've all tried to point out. So, as, as part of the cuts, and that's not what we, I know, sir, you're shaking your head, no, you may not like this, but.
Look, I'm not, I'm not saying about the sidewalks. You say, you need sidewalks.
Well, that's okay.
Could you come forward and speak into Mike, sir?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to. You don't want to hear me.
Okay, well, thank you. And I, I do agree that Metropolitan is rough. So, it's not something that's not part of our vision.
According to your numbers that you guys are putting out for Bonner Springs, it looks like you guys can deduct 3.8 mills and still be okay. And I wish you guys would look into that and see, I know Edwardville lower deal mill rate, or mill rate, and Kansas City, Kansas, lower deal mill rate, the Community College, lower deal mill rate. There's a lot of them that is falling suit, the library and all this is doing this. Why can't you listen to the taxpayers and go looking at this stuff? Because it is possible. You know, you guys are always, in the history of Windout County, that I've lived in Windout County all my life, I've never seen the taxes go down, never. Even though the housing wasn't selling for a long time, our house taxes never went down. Did you guys ever do anything about it? Hell, no, nobody did. The taxpayers had enough, and enough is enough. You guys need to start listening to the taxpayers. I appreciate that you guys would even think about it. I mean, you know, everybody says they're hurting up here, you know, but they're probably not hurting like the poor people or the seniors or even the middle class. I don't know where you guys fall into, but we need to do something about it. As, and you guys, you guys are supposed to be our voice, and we're not hearing you guys the way that we're talking. It seems like we're talking to a wall or over your head. Nothing's being done. It's starting to be done in Kansas City, Kansas. It's starting to be done in Edwardsville. It's starting to be done, Community College. It's starting to be done in the libraries. It's going to be starting to do in, in all these schools and stuff. Things are changing. And we, as a city, have to change our lifestyle in the city government. Not only us, which we have to, no matter what. We have a budget, whether we like it or not. You guys are always saying, well, we need more, we need more. The thing of it is, we can't take it no more. You guys got to start understanding. You know, it, it's not me. There's, there's over 1,100 people looking at different things and paying attention to all you guys up here in all this Windout County. It's not just me. I'm speaking for them, too. And they're pissed because they can't come up here and say something to you. And apparently, a lot of these meetings that you go to, you ask about the emails, anybody looking at me, well, we ain't got time to look at emails. Well, the thing of it is, that's the people that's wanting to get ahold of you guys and let you know, it's not okay. It is not. And I hope you guys look at all this stuff, you know, and, you know, you guys are short $500,000? Well, with all these deals that all these people are making, and you're putting in pilot fees to Windout County, just like all the, you know, all the other counties or cities. You got a pilot fee? You, you give money back to?
No.
The unified government, don't you?
No.
You give money back to, I thought you were still involved in that.
We have our own water system.
What's that?
We have our own water system. That is, a pilot fee is something that's tagged on to the BPU bills.
Right, but don't you have something like Edwardsville has a pilot fee, too, or something like that?
Yes, because they're on BPU water.
And what are you guys giving to, to unified government for being in unified government? What are you getting for that? Nothing? You paying anything for it?
You're paying, you're paying with your county taxes.
What's that?
You're paying with your county taxes. We do not pay anything as a government entity.
Right, okay. Yeah, so I'm misinformed on that. But the thing of it is, we really need to do something. I, you know, I can't even emphasize how bad it's hurting a lot of people. So, what, please look at it.
Respectfully, nobody, none of you were at any of the budget workshops. I appreciate that, and I real, I appreciate that. It's, it's important. It's very important. But the information is out there, the public workshops are open to everyone, and, and your involvement makes a difference.
Ms. Gurley, I might have you hold off until council items speak.
Thank you.
Okay. We need to stop the back-and-forth discussion, so if there's any, anybody who'd like to speak.
I just have a question. And, oops, the, what they're putting, and I'm not even sure, it's, I think behind like Moon Marble, that new, where there's trails, is that in the budget or is that a grant?
Neither.
Okay.
It doesn't exist yet.
It's what?
It doesn't exist yet. It's, it's a someday dream.
Okay, so that's not, okay, that's all I was curious about. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Please, sir, move forward.
The easiest thing to do is ask for more money. The hardest thing to do is look into the budget and make cuts. I know everybody wants police, fire. I saw the police department, I've been here 50 years. We used to have four police officers. I don't know how many we have now, but there's a big presence of police in, in Bonner now. But if it's not this year, or 2025, next year, you're going to have to look into cutting some funds somewhere because we cannot take it anymore. It's, might not be 2025, 2026, we'll be back because we cannot fund everything in the county anymore.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, I would ask if anybody would like to speak on this matter, Mr. Reeves? This is strictly, currently what's in front of us is just the budget for the amendments.
I have no other comments on this particular item.
Okay.
No comments.
Ms. Blanks?
No.
Okay, with that, then I would call for a vote.
Voting on a motion to approve notice of.
Sorry. Voting on a motion to approve notice of public hearing and schedule the public hearing for the proposed 2024 budget amendments for Monday, September 9th, 2024.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes. Show up and talk to us.
Did we not get a motion?
Yes.
Yes, we have a motion on.
We didn't get a motion for this item.
Okay.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the public hearing notice and schedule a public hearing for 2024 budget amendments for Monday, September 9th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Blanks, and we'll go ahead and stay next door there to Ms. Long for the second. So, now, let's call for the vote.
Okay, so we'll start over. Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, onto item number four, which is approve the notice of a public hearing and schedule a public hearing for adoption of the 2025 budget. Ms. LaPlante?
Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. This is to schedule the public hearing for the 2025 budget. You have two options before you. Option one is to maintain the current mill levy rate at 39.8, estimated at 39.871. Option two would be a mill, estimated mill levy of 38.833. This would drop the mill levy by 1.038. It would be an estimated increase in tax dollars of $297,000, wouldn't be absorbing that whole $436,000 valuations. That's why the rate would be lower. So, this would be, whatever option is approved by the council will be published in the paper this week. There will be a hearing on the 9th, and the council cannot go above that tax amount or above the expenditures amount. It can be. this week. There will be a hearing on the ninth, and the council cannot go above that tax amount or above the expenditures amount. It can be dropped after it's published, but it can't exceed what's published.
I might ask staff, do we have that as a slide that we can put up, those two options?
Tilly, can you also mention how, how we've dropped the mill levy? How many mills we've dropped the past couple of years?
Yes, last, for, uh, two years ago, we were at 41.871, I believe. We dropped last year's budget, we dropped the tax mill levy rate, too. And this year's option two proposal would be dropping it by another mil. I, and there also are a couple slides. Yeah, that kind of show like what our current tax levy is, what the option two proposal, which is staff's proposal. So our current levy, tax levy for the 2024 budget is 4,958,400. That funds our general fund, which is most of our general city, police, fire, public safety, streets, debt service, all of our debt, and then the libraries. So the proposed 2025 budget option two would levy 5,198, which is an increase of 297,000 from the 2024 budget, budgeted taxes to 2025. That would be a decrease in our tax rate of approximately 1.038 mils. And then our next slide kind of just shows, we've talked about, I know Councilman Gurley and Councilman Blanks mentioned, these are the items that are included in the 2025 budget that are the reason that those additional taxes are needed. Funding a full-time IT systems analyst, a part-time fire inspector, pay adjustments, health insurance increases of 7%. Our property and liability insurance are estimated to increase 20%. And of course, you know, the cost of all goods and services continue to increase. So we've got two options on the table. The first option one would be to maintain the current tax levy, and option two would be to go back to slide two, Chris. To levy the 5.198. And again, this is just the budget to publish in the paper. There will be a hearing on the ninth, and whatever's published, you can come down, you can't go up. Any questions?
I'm going to ask for public comment here in a second. Anything from staff? No? Any additional? Okay, would anybody on, in the public like to speak on this matter?
You want a motion?
No, not a motion yet, just a public can speak on this. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this? Please. Afreek, come up.
I, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. I'm not the sharpest tack in the box, but, so, so I understand. The increase in property taxes has generated revenue that exceeds the budget, or the increase in our taxes, whether it's property or all the things that we've generated. And they're saying it could actually drop the mill levy in order to hit the budget requirement. So that, what they're going to vote on is either staying at the current mill levy or dropping it to meet the budget.
As the mayor mentioned early, when we set the budget, we say, this is the amount of tax dollars we need to operate in the budget. The mill levy estimates are based on the estimated valuations.
The need.
So the mill levy isn't what we're setting, the tax dollars is what we're setting. This is just showing that based on what the county is estimating for our valuations, that our rate would drop with the taxes that we need.
Okay, and, and again, let me, I just want to understand this, because I, I get these things in the mail. Who knows how to read these? Who actually knows what they mean? Is, is there a workshop for that?
Yes, sir, there is.
I, 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 I'm a, I'm a new resident to Bonner Springs. I've been here five years. We built a house over here by the park, and, and my taxes went up $50,000 this year. And it just, it's getting scary, because if this is the future I have, it's soon going to be more than I can handle on a fixed income. So, so I just kind of, I need to understand, obviously, how to calculate these things. But I also want to make sure that I'm understanding the working here, and, and I, I get it. What they're saying our valuations are, makes our current mill levy exceed the budget, right?
I can help answer that.
Go ahead.
So we.
Who's qualified to answer that question?
Well, Ms. Vogel can answer.
We put together a budget at the current mill levy rate.
Right.
To absorb those taxes into the budget. And presented that to the council in a workshop. From hearing their feedback, we also put together another budget where Tilly and I and the department heads cut as much as we could.
Right.
From each department to get to the point to where we could lower it by.
We're talking about two different budgets then.
The option one and the option two, yes.
There's two options for tonight. In fact, the two options. What you got on your notice was if we left the mill levy the same. So what was in your, your notice was saying, we're not going to change, we're not going to change the mill levy. So option two, if it is approved and goes forward, that would lower that dollar amount on the, on your notice.
I think I got that.
And please always feel, come, come to workshops. We hold those before the meeting so we can work together with you to answer those questions.
Thank you.
And you are free to reach out to me at any time you wish.
But yeah, please come to workshops, because that's the time where, that's the only topic we talk about, is that one thing in the entirety, and staff comes and presents and teaches us, which is also an opportunity to teach you.
I've always been confused by the, by the, the mill levy dance.
Right.
Because it is a dance. One of those things that I think is, is almost made confusing so that people to go, ah, yeah.
Sir, I agree with what you're saying. A couple of us, we have visited long and hard trying to understand it ourselves.
Yeah.
With Tilly here for one, and then some other people we've talked to. Historically, if you think back, or look back 20, 30 years, Bonner Springs has consistently lowered, it, been able to lower that mill levy rate a half a percent, a percent, a percent and a half, half a percent through the years. And this year, again, as it works out, if we would go for option number two, we would end up lowering it about a mil.
Right.
Okay, so we're, like we said, we're trying to do what we can.
Right, and, and my, my thoughts here are if, maybe, maybe these items should have been reversed on the program. If we'd had this one first, it might have given some people a little more, uh, hope or foresight in some of the comments that were made. Because I think a lot of folks figured, they're not even listening to me. They're just saying, I understand, but we got to have more. When in, in actuality, if you take into effect the increased tax base, it allows for some changes, and nobody was, nobody was looking that far down the road.
But you were patient enough to stay and listen to the whole thing, so.
Well, I, I was listening at the beginning, and I knew this was coming, so. I, I, I appreciate the hard work you all do and, and the time and effort that you put into it, and I really appreciate you letting me share a podium with you. Thank you.
Just for clarifications, you said your taxes went up 50,000? Your taxes went up or your property valuation?
Valuation.
Okay, because that, I was going to say, wow. You got a nice house. Tell her to slow down.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? You're welcome. Please come up. Well, we, we need to have your name on the, name and address on the record.
I think everybody is just strapped as deep as they can be right now. The economy, everything. And I think they're just expecting you guys to buckle it down, too, just like we are having to. I mean, even if it means making some cuts for a year or two, not making progress for a.